It is seven oh two, I can't find my glasses, which is always fun. We'll start the January eighth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Dartmouth Planning Board. And this, as all other meetings, is being recorded currently and will be throughout the meeting. Administrative items tonight. Gender item number one, release of lots from Performance Covenant. RLPC twenty-three dash ten, ten Ava Street, assesses map one twenty-eight lot fourteen dash four, uh, ten. Christine?
Um, so this was a um, an OSRD subdivision with three buildable lots and one open space parcel. Initially, when the owner-
Actually, Christine, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Margaret Sweet?
Yeah.
Uh, Kevin Estes?
Here.
Kevin Mello?
Here.
Nick Sekupatis?
Here.
And Chris O'Neil is here. Go ahead, Christine, sorry.
Um, so like I say, and this was originally a three lot, buildable subdivision with a fourth lot of open space. Um, an open space parcel. When the developer initially came before you, he requested that two of the lots be released. And um, at the end of last year, he, he requested that the third lot be released. So this third lot is the, it's the open space parcel, and then there's the three buildable lots. So it's the, the last lot in. Um, is the best way to explain it. So ten Ava Street, there was a lot of, of issues with the labeling of this. So it's, like you said, it's lot fourteen dash ten. Um, we are currently holding a surety, which we were not at, at the time of the first two lots were released. So at this point, I would like to, recommend that you uh, that you have the uh, the right and should um, release this lot ten, for ten Ava Street, which is lot fourteen dash ten for construction.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience, either for or against?
I do not see anybody else online.
Any questions to the board members? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion, uh, we release the lot as presented.
Uh, motion made by Kevin Mello. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Kevin is better.
Uh, second by Kevin Estes. Uh, Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Sekupatis?
Yes.
And Chris O'Neil is a yes. All set, Christine?
Okay, so I will let the developer and the engineer know tomorrow that um, the lot will be released. We are still holding the surety at this point.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, item number two, the accessory dwelling unit, uh, proposed zoning bylaw. Um, I-
So we-
Go ahead.
Sent out before um, before the end of the year, we had sent out a survey. We did get one back. Um, I could start putting together a draft. Um, we've looked at a couple of other ones. So I'd like to do that, but if any of you have just some basic feedback that you'd like to give me, particularly with numbers and things like that, that that, the square footage that you'd like to see, that, that would be really helpful, so that we can get something to Brian, so then he can mock it up and we can go from there. In order to get it on for town meeting, we really need to kind of just do that now. Um, I can tell you that one of the things that came before us today, um, myself and zoning, um, it had nothing to do with this particular thing, but um, it drew attention to the, to the square footage size. I know there has been some discussion of that in the past. And one of the things that we found, this thing that came in was for a pool house, and basically it was like forty by twenty-five or something like that. So that was a thousand square feet. Um, the accessory dwelling units, even with the bedroom, are eight hundred square feet. Um, so keep that in mind when you're all going forward. We are, we have been seeing the last couple of years of a large number of poolhouse structures that are going up. Um, and that seems to be kind of like a workaround, and maybe in some cases they are really those things, but they often have kitchens and bathrooms and, you know, I, um, or they have an open floor plan, like they could be a studio or something like that. So just keep that in mind when you're giving me any numbers or any advice.
Okay. Um, we've got time to go through this, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, so I, I'm sure that you all have it in your packet. Um, I, I thought maybe the best way to go about it is to go down um, and take a look at the first page. When we look at the um, starting with, uh, let me see, what is the page, uh, page it is in the packet, but the first page of the ADU, uh, grid, I guess I could call it.
The allowed zones?
Yeah, where it's got the um, current allowed zones, top left, maximum size. General Residence SRA.
Page fourteen in the packet.
Fourteen, okay. Um, and I know that we got one packet left, uh, or in, uh, to Ross. Mine, I left on my desk and never sent to him, but I was kind of lockstep with uh, most of the sentiment in, in the one that we did get. Um, firing a couple of small, well, well, a couple of things. Um, as far as the, uh, the size of the units. So uh, right now we're at eight hundred and five thirty on the um, special residence, uh, which is just Lincoln Park, right, Christine? So a single residency, sorry.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so um, I, I'm just, what I'll do is, I, I'm just gonna bring each line up, I'm gonna throw out my opinion on it, and if we want to talk about it, converse about it, and then um, what would this next step be, Christine? We'll take these recommendations or ideas and bring these um, back to Brian and see if we can put together a draft.
I think if we follow another community's thing and kind of give him a draft to look at and to give comment on, because what a part of, part of what I've learned from, in talking to Brian is that, I mean, sometimes we have him draft things for us outright, but sometimes it's easier just to get across where we're, what we're trying to do and then get feedback from him on what is allowed and not allowed. So,
Right, yeah.
Then what I would do is maybe send it over, you know, over to you over the next couple of weeks, have Ross send it out, and then have you give comment. We can work out some of that stuff before we send it to Brian for review and comment.
Okay, so I, I want to just remind everybody first off why we're even looking at this, right? And I, you know, just as a reminder, I guess. Um, my, my contention is that we've got an issue with housing, not only in the country, but in the state and also in the town. And one of the ways that we're able to, I think, draw some of the, maybe the older people out of the larger homes uh, into smaller dwellings like these um, would be to make them, you know, make some changes to the current bylaw in the allowances that the town has. Um, one of those uh, goals, uh, that, that's one of the main goals, is to increase housing stock. Without um, without driving, you know, an incredible amount of traffic, obviously. Um, the benefits of enhancing the ADUs in, in the town would be um, we'd increase the housing stock. Number two, we would uh, drive some business to local artisans, plumbers, electricians, finish work guys, uh, construction people in general. Um, and, you know, hopefully uh, float all boats for a while with something like this, if, if it's, um, if it's taken up well enough. But it won't hurt, uh, those different trades. We could give, through some of these changes, we could uh, give residents of the town that have the applicable space setbacks uh, and availability of their uh, the structure and in the, in their um, uh, separate, uh, detached uh, buildings. Give them an opportunity to uh, keep family closer. Or potentially, uh, actually you could do both. You could keep family closer, you could draw those older people out into these units and get younger family in the larger houses. Uh, we could also increase revenue for some of our property owners to try and offset the inflation cost of, of owning property, not only in town, but just owning property in general. Um, and I think we could um, you know, uh, have it, have it as, as a base of income too, uh, for the town. So we'd be increasing the, the value of the home, the assessed value of the homes. We'd also be therefore increasing the, the tax base for the town and drawing in some fees for different departments and also uh, increasing the um, the tax base, uh, which is a, a very important thing. So, uh, you know, I, I think it hits on all of those. Um, so I, I think it, it's worth, it's definitely worth looking at for, for sure, and I, and we obviously have some buy-in from, from you guys, uh, from the beginning. So my, my, I'll, I'll give you an idea on size that I was thinking of after uh, attending the, that, that Harvard uh, webinar and, and reading a couple of articles and doing a little bit of research. I think up to a thousand uh, would, would be fair. Uh, given the size of some of the homes, uh, and Christine just mentioned, uh, we didn't set that up, by the way. Uh, she just mentioned the, uh, the size of some of the projects that are coming in. Uh, that could potentially be used in this manner. Um, but up to a thousand, I think is um, you know, between eight fifty uh, and a thousand, it's, it's not a lot of space, but I, I think what it does is it gets back to one of Nick's points early on when we started talking about this, was the availability of a little bit more space for uh, you know, accessibility issues as we get older. Um, maybe some, uh, maybe a, a, a little bit of a bigger bedroom in the two-bedroom for a caretaker. Uh, more equipment, things like that. Um, so I, I think up to a thousand is, is where I'm kind of leaning toward. Um, any, why don't we start with that first one? Any um, in, in two bedrooms also, I don't want to go past the, the two bedrooms. What do we have for comments on that first part?
So I just want to say, just to, to add to that, um, basically what I was getting at with the poolhouses is oftentimes they probably become some type of a, of an accessory unit afterwards, after the fact. So we would um, maybe avoid some of that other stuff that's happening as well, if you get up to a certain number. That might help to make it more legitimate, instead of some of the stuff that's probably happening.
Right. Take those off the black market, if you will.
Yeah.
Are you saying to, are you saying for a pool house that looks like, smells like, walks like an ADU, be classified as an ADU from the get-go? And feel free to use pool house, don't come to me with a pool, saying an ADU tomorrow?
I think that maybe, right, they become that after the fact, right? The second everybody leaves. So I'd rather see them get that legitimately permitted upfront, make sure it has all of the right things in place, you know, for everybody's purpose. I mean, like I said, to the one today, you know, maybe it is, and you know, maybe half of them are and half of them aren't. But there is, I have never seen so many pool houses. I mean, it's great that parts of Dartmouth are loaded, but I mean, you know, there, there's way too many if I, if I did, you know, and, and, and when you start seeing, when you see bathtubs and things like that, it's not like just a little, you know, a little lavette thing with like a shower and a, you know, but when you start seeing bathtubs in a pool house, there's something, you know, and when you kitchens, I mean, you know, it becomes, you know, an outdoor kitchen is one thing, but when you see outdoor and indoor and, you know.
Right, so that becomes one issue, right? Whether the structure that they're using for the pool house was built before a certain period where they could turn it into an ADU. But that, that's, I think that's a little bit further down the line when we get into that particular area of it. Um, but the first one is definitely the size and the number of bedrooms. Um, so what, what do you think about the actual size?
I actually, I think it's great. Um, I really do. Um, you need that, and, and again, this board is always, I, I always hear for your parents to move in, and my mind's going to for my kids to stay at home but have their own place. So I want to, I want everyone to think from both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the single residence C, the, the five thirty, that's Lincoln Park only. So all those lots are uniform, is that correct? There's no double lots like you would have in, in the older neighborhoods?
No, I, I don't think so, and we can get that answered for you, Kevin, but I, I think those were set out that way. But we can, we can definitely make sure.
Right, right, because um, so general residence, uh, Bliss Corner area, I mean, those are smaller lots. And it does concern me a little bit to say a thousand square foot on an eight thousand square foot lot.
Um, but up to, say up to a thousand?
Up to, and then we have lot coverage maximums in place.
Right.
That would protect the town, so that your neighbor with an eight thousand square foot lot isn't going to be able to cover ninety-five percent of their lot. Correct, Christine, or?
That, that is, that is correct, and then like the aquifer or anything else, there are lot coverage things on those as well, so. Um, and you don't necessarily have to put it in every district. You can, you can choose which district, districts you want it to apply to. I mean, I, I get, you know, maybe you do want it in every district and maybe, right, up to is the, is the way to get it, to get around it. Um, to make it fair, fair and equitable, and you know, again, the lot coverage things have to take into consideration. The aquifer thing is one of the biggest things we have.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So um, okay, so what, Chris, what do you have for um, the single residency? Is, are you, are you proposing up to a thousand there also, or?
Well, I, I think, I think you're right. I think the, the setbacks on those particular lots, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more difficult.
Mm-hmm.
But
So if we just, if we just say up to a thousand throughout the town and let the rest of the zoning bylaws?
Yeah, it wouldn't negate uh, the requirements of, of the building department in, uh, in zoning. You know, as far as setbacks go.
It, it really keeps it simple, too.
Right.
For our point of view.
Building department, yeah, they're not having a-
Building department. So once this is enacted, these buildings would be by right. And there would be no need for a special permit or ZBA unless there's another trigger mechanism.
Right, and, and the one that's been used in the past is the date. So for, for the detached, anyway.
For the detached, absolutely.
Right.
This thousand square foot, will, will this include? This is just the living space, or let's say a breezeway is required to attach the, the addition, the accessory unit to the primary home? Because I'm sure that's gonna come up, and we should address that.
Well, right, right now they have to be attached in some way, right? So that's part of the thing with the pool house thing. So you have to decide how important that is to you if you want it to truly be for families, whether old or young, or whether that-
I, I think, we've all said it, the detached portion. I, I think the consensus of this board is that, yes, they should be detached, uh, attached, not detached. Um, but my question is, is like some houses, they, they build a, a sunroom or a breezeway to connect the primary home to the dwelling unit, the accessory.
Yeah, and my, my only thought on that, Kevin, is that if it's, if it's part of the addition for access to or use of the, the additional dwelling unit, then it's in.
Then it's part of the thousand.
Yeah, I would say, I would say it would be in, and I think the building department would probably look at that the same way.
Okay, so they're not gonna look at gross living space, they're gonna look at the addition, the, the square footage of the addition.
Right.
That really makes the thousand square feet even more important than saying
Right.
nine fifty, because some of that may be used up in a common area or a a breezeway or the attachment mechanism.
Especially when you start talking about accessibility, right?
Correct. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Nick.
Should we consider this um, attachment, if you would, or connectivity between what's gonna be constructed in the existing dwelling? Should we consider language that says up to but not to exceed twenty percent of the total square footage of the ADU? So in a thousand square foot setting, you got a ten by twenty, you can't go fifty, sixty feet across the driveway to the backyard uh, with a forty-eight inch hallway and a cover, um, and expand that way? Should it be limited now or leave it up to the building department? I mean, twenty percent is reasonable, right? Two hundred square foot breezeway or hallway to get to a thousand square foot ADU, how far you're really gonna go?
Right.
It takes, I think it's gonna take away a lot of questions or concerns somewhere along the way of permitting or, or preventing something from coming back to us.
So you, so your suggestion is uh, is a cap on, by percentage of the current living space?
No, it'd be ADU that's being proposed. If they're proposing a thousand square feet.
Yep.
Let, let's just say it's a detached by date, it's gonna, it's gonna conform and it's, and it's a thousand square feet.
Hmm.
Um, and we want to attach it, what's the attachment gonna be? Are we gonna have any limitations, or is it gonna be open-ended? And same thing for anything new. Um, there might be stairs going into the house on the front and the side, and the new one's gonna need to be at ground level. So they're gonna propose some kind of an attachment. The breezeway's gonna be level with the driveway, so the wheelchair can get to the breezeway. Take a right, you go to the ADU, it's a thousand square feet. Take a left inside the breezeway, you go back to the twenty-two hundred square foot gate. Well, is there really a need for there to be much discussion about how big that connectivity can be? Or is up to twenty percent of the newly constructed ADU sufficient? I think it is, twenty percent, I think it's pretty liberal, two hundred square feet, but it's just a question I have.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I mean, what you don't want to see, you're right, is, is, is a rabbit run. You know, a rabbit run to a, to a separate building.
Or administratively handling this concept of connectivity project by project, when really it can be defined here once and for all. Let the proposer conform as they come to town hall.
Well, I think that the way that Kevin was, was just asking the question meant it was included within the amount, right? If, if I'm-
Well, right, and that's, I mean-
So that, I think that twenty percent cap would, would keep it from being too far out away from the main structure or something, if that's what you're working on.
The twenty percent would simply say, you now have eight hundred square feet of living space to work with.
Right.
But if you're using a two hundred square foot, it, it's keep it simple.
Yeah.
Uh, method, if you have a thousand-
Four hundred square feet to get to it, then it negates the, the-
Yeah, exactly. But I, I meant absolutely the opposite of that. I meant, do we make the thousand square feet available living space? And do we set by percentage of the ADU, a six hundred, we get a hundred and twenty square feet? Two thousand, we get four hundred square feet. Do we set a percentage of the proposed ADU to be built for connectivity? Rather be breezeway, hallway, et cetera, any of the things we've talked about, so that it doesn't take away from the thousand square feet?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing it laid out separately in, in any of the examples that I've seen. I, I can check it though, Nick.
No, that's okay, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm okay if it's included too, but I wasn't, I wasn't clear that we're going down the road that it's inclusive in the thousand, and I didn't want it to be open-ended project by project, because I think that's a can of worms.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so- I think, I think if it's a new addition, then that it should be included in the thousand feet.
In the thousand.
Yeah, we have a couple of, of properties in town that uh, looks like a runway to get to the- I mean, we all know where they are, and it's ridiculous.
A thousand's going to work anyways for two bedrooms and decent square footers. Like I told you, the assisted living facilities that I looked at, you get into a six hundred, seven hundred and thirty square foot range, you were picking the best suite in the facility. There was plenty of room.
Right.
So I, I think we're within reason, I just wasn't sure if it was inclusive or not. That's fine.
Well, it's gonna reward, by saying a thousand square feet, it's gonna reward people that keep the addition close to the main home.
Hundred percent.
And, and you know, there should be a reward for that. Um, you know, I'd rather see the thousand square feet, keep it simple than say nine fifty square feet of living space and just forget about how it's connected to the house, because we'll get those runways again.
Right, so, so one of the point that goes to this, Nick, and I'm glad you brought this up, is that, you know, further down in the analysis, uh, comes the approval process. And if the planning board, say, is required to take a look at this on a site plan review, um, that can be one of the, one of the, uh, the issues um, that, that's brought up, you know, when, when you go to, you know, the, the difference in architecture and, and the style of the home. Um, so that, that could present a problem for people if they try and do the rabbit run and take three hundred square feet just to get to a separate, separate unit. That would not well with the board, I guess.
But they, they, those people, Chris, would still have the ZBA as an option.
Right.
They need to be, they have a hardship, they must be three hundred feet away from the main house. And that only gives them seven hundred square feet of living space, but they need more. They can bring that hardship to the ZPA. We're not eliminating it.
That's true, that's true. Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Yep, so, so, so far, um, in, in, keep the comments coming, up to a thousand, two bedrooms. Um, and if you're good with that, detached accessory dwelling units allowed, yes, they are now. Um,
With a special permit, isn't it?
It's, it's, they're existing.
Uh, after two thousand and six?
Two thou, June sixth, two thousand and six. So this is a big, this is probably one of the bigger issues, I, I think. Um, you know, you can, you can go backwards and eliminate the detached going forward. I don't think, you know, we, we want to go backwards. Um, but adding square footage, um, would uh, or going up to a thousand square feet, may make some structures, some current structures built prior to two thousand and six, a little bit more attractive and financially more feasible to do right now. Um, so what, you could get rid of that date altogether. You could allow, you could allow building permits, as long as the setbacks are, are set, the size of the lots are set, uh, and and allow an accessory unit in a detached new structure. What are the thoughts there?
I have a question and a thought.
Yeah.
Considering everything we're talking about is constructive in nature, both for the town and for the proponents, the families and so on. What could we be doing to the town or those that may want to propose with anything newer than two thousand and six, if we kept that in place? Like, wouldn't it behoove us to make this all-inclusive and kind of move forward from this date as we propose this? Why are we looking, why are we looking to make progress by exclusion, I guess, is my question? Or who are we excluding and why?
That's a good question.
Well, right now, it's a grandfather, or, or I'm sorry, a legacy. Um, a, a allow, allowance. So we would be, by changing that, we would be penalized and somebody who has a house that they've said, okay, maybe someday we'll do an accessory apartment in the back building, because it's allowed. So I feel like we're gonna be taking that right away if we say no, you, you know, forget about two thousand and six, they're just not allowed, period, end of story. So you'll make-
Nick, you're, you're saying the opposite, aren't you?
I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying not to exclude, not to have a date. Why make it that cumbersome if we're looking to make progress and make a detached ADU or an attached ADU feasible? Why are we looking to include a date and/or the age or not, or, you know, why are we looking to include that? I'm missing that point.
Well, I think in general, we had said in, in the past, that we did not want to have detached
Right.
accessory units, and that's how I feel. However, right now, people from prior to two thousand and six do have that right. And, and I feel it would be wrong to limit the, the homeowner's rights. Maybe they bought the house saying, hey, you know what, that building was done in two thousand and five. By the town rules, we can make that an accessory apartment when mom gets to a certain age. And now we're gonna say, no, you can't do that. So I feel that we're limiting some homeowner's rights by changing that.
I, I, and I would agree with you a hundred percent if we did that. I'm thinking quite the opposite. If we're looking to see poolhouses with uh, with four-inch plumbing, toilets, bathtub, a, and, and a kitchen sink, and we know there's gonna be a bend in there, and we're looking to move forward and make things that might be ADUs or might become ADUs, make it clear to the homeowners, you got a one shot to declare this yes or no. And obviously, we see more going from pool house to ADU, ADU being used as a pool house. If that's the case, with conforming lot, uh, conforming lot coverage, setback situations that are allowed, that allow for such, should we make it inclusive? Should we allow the detached option? Or better yet, my question would have more value, being very transparent publicly. If I knew how many detached units there were prior to that day compared to after that day, like, what am I really talking about? Here, I'm just talking about a concept, so I'm asking for forgiveness, because I don't know if it's six or a hundred and eighty-two. But conceptually, I'm saying if someone is allowed, and then you have someone that bought in the state law, and they technically could do it, but it's newer, are we doing the town or them any good by excluding it?
So I don't know that we have a way to go back and get all of the old ones that exist. I mean, maybe in theory we can. I can tell you, over the last couple of years, I can get the number of ones, of pool houses, permits, that type of thing that have been applied for. Um, the only thing I would say to you is that, right, I mean, from basically from what I've said earlier today, some of that was done disingenuously, right? So they are detached and they are um, you know, so you have to make that determination. I mean, you know, I I don't know how many have already been converted right now. You know, I I get the impression, like, the one we saw today was the result of the reason that I saw it today was because it's going to go before zoning, because the trigger on that special permit was the um, the installation of the water lines and stuff, so that, you know, there's usually something in there that triggers them having to go to get some other type of a permit. But um, like I said, I'm sure half of those ones that have been put in the last couple of years, like I said, the uptick is definitely there. You know, we're not done as they were said they were gonna be done. There's no way. I mean, the economy is has not, it's not that great to be doing that. I mean.
As a, as a board, I mean, other than my questions, as a board, have we more or less come to a conclusion that we do not want to include detached moving forward? I know we were leaning that way in prior conversations, but is that where we're at?
See, I'm struggling with that personally, because I I think it goes against I think it goes against what generally the state is trying to do, and I I think at some point the state is gonna come down and they and they're gonna tell us that it's allowed. Right, they're trying to get this in legislation now, and it's been in legislation, but not passed. But I I think this governor is is gonna have some say about that. Um, and I'm not saying to do it just because, you know, this pending, you know, possible legislation. But it goes to my original goals of driving housing stock, driving business for local businesses, uh, increasing assessed values, increasing revenue for property owners. Um, still requiring setbacks, zoning, uh, size of law, um, and potentially parking and some of the other things that you wanna put in, but um, I am, I am really kinda leaning toward um, my my opinion is leaning toward allowing, uh, two thousand and six. Um, I mean, you could play with the date, I guess, you could change the date. Um, but uh but it all depends on on what the goal is. You know, we can eliminate the date too um, for existing.
I hate moving, I hate the idea, I'll finish with this comment and then I'll listen, but I I hate the idea of moving the date when I don't know what moving the date does. When I don't know the data. You know, hazardly moving the date and not knowing what the cause and effect is. I I struggle with contributing to that, because what does it really mean? Who are we affecting and how many? But nonetheless, I think it's great dialogue, and you have definitely stimulated my mind, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate.
Christine, do we, do we remember uh the issue with the date? I thought we talked a little bit about it, but we didn't really have anything concrete. Oh, Kevin, do you remember?
I I believe that was the date that these
That was changed.
Into effect.
Okay.
And again, in fairness to the current landowners at that time, which was well before my time, um, that they ins- that they instituted that particular date out of fairness to the current.
I could try to do a little bit of research in-house over the next couple of weeks to see if I can get some numbers. Maybe the assessors has some numbers, you know, or some of the old ones, because they would have, they would have the, you know, a record of units.
I can still, I I can be persuaded either way. There's great arguments on both sides, but I do, I am concerned with detached, uh, as far as down the road, somebody coming in saying, oh, I got two houses on my property, I want it subdivided. Uh, you know, I've got fi- four acres, I've got my house here, my mother's house there. I need to sell my mother's house, I have a hardship. Here's a yeah, yeah, we got the frontage. Here's a um approval not required plan, subdividing the properties. And if it's attached.
Do that anyway, couldn't they?
Not if it's attached to the house, no.
No, you're right, yeah, if it's attached, but if it's, if it was a, if it was a pre-existing structure, then they they could obviously do that, right?
They they could, those people from prior to two thousand and six
Right.
Could possibly do that.
Yeah.
And the the real question is, do we wanna upset the potential person or two that bought their house prior to two thousand and six that we're taking their right away from? If not, we just say, okay, going forward, no more detached without special permit. Will that stop the swimming pool, the pool houses? Will that stop the illegal uses? Whenever we say illegal use and, um, you know, what's going on? To me, that's not a planning issue, that's not a problem with the planning board. That's an enforcement issue. That and that really the zone enforcement officer is the one who has to police that. Not that I'm trying to set up uh, you know, problems for that, that office. But we're never gonna stop it. We're never gonna stop it. What I'm hoping to do with this bylaw change is make it look more attractive to say, oh my god, my mother would have to live in eight hundred square feet. I'm not gonna do that. That's not worth.
Because of the cost, right? Yeah, it's not worth.
So now, oh, mom, mom will be comfortable in a thousand square feet. That that makes sense. We're never gonna stop those pool houses from being built and used illegally.
You got me thinking about my pool house now.
Well, I'm I'm finding leaving the date the way it is. Okay, I think, you know, leave the date the way it is, if uh prior to two thousand and six, if somebody out out here where I live has a barn, and that maybe they had horses, now they don't. And they wanna turn their barn into a uh, into a uh, an uh, ADU, they should be able to. I'm not happy with detached. I think unless it's prior to two thousand and six, then everything should be attached. And especially if we're talking about elderly people. I think it's better to have it attached in case something happens to mom and dad, if she falls or something like that, and they're disabled. No, I'm not, I I don't wanna see a bunch of detached houses going up.
Other than safety, like, just, and I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not playing devil's advocate. I'm 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 trying to learn here for for getting, getting, get your mindset. Wha- wha- what could go wrong or what what don't you like about it?
I don't think uh, two houses on one lot, okay, in Docklands is needed. If you need to build a a unit for someone, or even a kid or whoever it is, then you need to attach it to your house. I don't, I'm not a big fan of uh detached units on on lots. I mean, actually, how many do we have in town? Again, Christine, how how many detached apartments, uh, whatever you wanna call call it, do we have? I don't think we have too many. I mean, I don't see that many, when I'm always on the road.
Well, most of them, the the one or two that I know of are are behind the house. You wouldn't see it.
Maybe, but I still, I mean, how many do we have? Do we have five in the whole town of Docklands? I will see, if we, if we say we want detached, we're gonna have a lot more than five. I'm against detached.
What if somebody has a detached garage? And then wanna build like a a a stu- a studio above it? Is 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 that, you're, are you gonna say that if you're gonna, you're gonna build something above the garage that includes a kitchen and bathroom, that now you're gonna have to attach it?
Not if it was built before two thousand and six.
Right. So that's an accessory structure, which is allowed, right? I mean, so it's not an accessory dwelling unit. The difference here, part of the difference is the accessory dwelling unit. Same thing like with the barn, like I mean, the barn was built as an accessory structure, so you gotta remember structure versus that. Uh, and then you have to also remember now that you know, since two thousand and six, you know, a lot of this it, um, it, you know, how how people vacation is different now. You got the short-term rentals, you've got all of that other stuff. So you're opening up more opportunities for that, whe- whether you want it or you don't want it. If you're trying to create, um, if you're trying to create dwelling units for, you know, either kids or or adults and stuff like that, you've got probably a little bit more control over it for starters. Um, and it's fine if you want to go in the other direction too, but I I can see that that would be some of the potential, the potential in it, um, impacts that you might see, you know, so you'd have to give some consideration and also do something with short-term rental things in there, you know, to put some things in place. Because you just don't want it to get completely away from you. So you do, maybe you start off with attached structures, and then maybe you add to it you know, for detached structures, or maybe you do, you know, detached structures and short-term rentals, or you do, but if you're trying right now to increase your housing stock, then, you know, you need to keep some of these other things in mind, or else maybe just put some extra precautions in to protect yourself.
And I I know, Margaret, I know that one of the issues um that you're concerned with, and rightly so, is the uh, is the rental market. In the short-term rental market in particular. And I, and I share that concern uh with you. Um, if i- if we, go ahead.
I'm concerned about neighborhoods, Chris, okay? I don't wanna see a big change in neighborhoods.
Yeah.
People buy into their neighborhood because that's where they wanna live. So we have to be careful in what we, what we do here.
I have a question.
Yep.
If we were to say attached, and there's somebody uh, two thousand and, uh, June seventh, two thousand and six, or newer that has a detached structure, do they have a right by special permit and or the ZBA to try and convert it to an ADU? Or is it black and white? No.
No, they always have a right.
Depends on how you.
You can, you can do anything in front of the ZBA, whether they.
Yeah, so the rea- the reason I ask is because I don't know if it was um in front of it with this board in public, or if it was in private. But I am one hundred percent for attached. But I need to understand the implication of what we're doing to those people from June sixth, two thousand and six to present time compared to those that have an opportunity prior. And I sympathize and agree with Margaret one hundred percent. When you buy a home in the neighborhood and decide to raise a family there, your first impression is should be your impression. Faring the fact it's a development that's growing, but an established neighborhood shouldn't forever be changing because of all these structures. I'm just trying to understand who we're including or who we're not. But ultimately, I agree with the attached concept.
So the prior, the prior would be by right if we continue like this. The later, the later would be by by CBA.
Right.
Yeah, so we're not really, we're not really, we're not really excluding anybody. We're back to a constructive opportunity for most people.
It's just by right or not.
Two beds.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think for control purposes, as a planning, eh eh eh, at the planning board level for control purposes and and to maintain some control, knowing there is a process for those that fall outside of our category, attached is the safest way to go.
Are we gonna limit who who's allowed to live in this? Well, that goes to the next point, property ownership. So why don't we move into that? I got a pretty good bead on on uh, on detached and but the uh, the property ownership. So right now, the property owner must occupy either the accessory apartment or the primary single-family residence.
For a certain amount of days.
Um, I don't know, is it? It doesn't say.
Hundred, hundred and eighty-four days, or is that something that I read?
Not remember seeing that at all.
I don't remember seeing that.
I could be wrong, yeah.
All time is a little bit excessive.
Well, I've read so many.
As, as their primary, as their primary home. So they may leave for Florida, or you know, December first, and come back May first, but their primary home.
Right.
They can't rent both units out and just be absentee. That's the bottom
We can't do that.
Uh, the the dangerous part about saying their primary home is I know many people that retire and because the tax laws are more favorable in Florida, they keep their primary home here, but they become residents of Florida. So technically, this isn't their primary home. So we we have to we have to try to work so that that doesn't become an issue. I think we all want them to be primary residents. Or maybe it says we cannot rent out both units simultaneously. Would that, would that work?
Well, we could say, we could say that, or we could put a number of days. I can't remember where I read that. Maybe, uh, I know Ross said it's.
Who's gonna police either one?
E- exactly, I mean.
Who's gonna police this?
Your neighbors are gonna police it.
I agree with that. No, that I agree with.
Uh, 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 getting back to 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 the the point about changing neighborhoods, like, are are we gonna allow either attached or detached? It doesn't really matter, uh, when when we're talking about this topic. Are we going to allow somebody that owns a house to build another unit, either attached or detached accessory dwelling unit? And then rent it out by the week, or the weekend, or the long weekend? Uh, or or are we gonna put a requirement that says, yes, the landowner has to, has to be living in one of of these, these uh, either the primary or the dwelling unit? And a direct relative has to live in the other one? Well, what I've seen, Kevin, is that uh, the thirty days comes up quite a lot.
Right.
When you try and get rid of the um, the VRBOs and you know, listen, it's, you know, we're we're close to the water here, and everybody knows there's a lot of rentals that go on during the summer. Uh, in in, there is a way to try and avoid that um, by limiting the number of days to a minimum of thirty for rentals.
So the state law says anyone that, any rental under thirty days is short-term rental. Thirty-one days and over is long-term.
Right.
Federal is a hundred days, but we all, we, the state supersedes that, so.
Yeah.
I if I rented your home for thirty-one days, and I stopped paying you rent, you would have to evict me through housing court, which could take six months. If I rent your through uh Airbnb or whatever for twenty-nine days, you don't have to go to housing court to evict me. That's short-term rental. Um,
But if if our goal i- is is to make it more palatable to live either as as uh your your kid starting out, uh, look, listen, my my daughter commutes up to, thankfully, I've got a a big enough house, and two of my kids have moved out. The youngest one lives here and and commutes up to Dana Farber. Uh, you know, she she might appreciate, ha- if, especially if the house were smaller, you know, it'd be, it'd be good to to build a a, an accessory dwelling unit, and who knows, maybe someday that's where I'm gonna be, and one of my kids is gonna be in the main house. But i- if it might, if that's what we're trying to address, either for kids or for for or parents, uh, then I I think we need to think about whether or not these units are going to allow, be allowed to be rented across the board to people that are not related whatsoever, either long or short term.
Mm-hmm.
So the consensus, yeah, building the 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 unit attached or detached, I I'm not sure that that really changes the 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 fiber of 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 the uh, the neighborhood. What what really changes the fiber fiber of the neighborhood is who goes into it.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. Well, um, I I see your point, Kevin, uh, cousin Kevin. Um, you know, as soon as that apartment is built out back, um, you can move in for two thousand a month over here on uh Twin Ponds. And that would become our problem. That would become the problem. It it is the police.
It is a problem.
It is the police, and and I think simply I I I think we need to keep it simple, guys. I really do.
Now, I don't think there's a way to police it. I I think, um, yeah, I thi- I think the number of days is a very important aspect of it, for sure. So you set that minimum, um, but as far as relationship goes, you know, if if we're trying to, if we're trying to drive these units to, from, from three a year to twelve or fifteen a year, um, then I think that's gonna go out the window. And that goes to, that goes to revenue for the, for the primary owner. I'm not saying get rid of the residency altogether. Um, but for the unit, I I I I don't think you're gonna be able to police it. And I think it goes to what we're trying to do, is to try and, you know, get some some primary units for uh, uh, for people in town and drive uh, drives for revenue for the town and also the people.
Chris, yeah, I I think, uh, I I like this phrase, I use it a lot, probably more than my son wants to hear, but I often say, the problem is the solution. The problem here is attached or detached. The problem here is attached or detached. Attached is the solution. There's no better person to police who's living, who's sleeping, and who's waking up and coming in and out of the unit than the landowners or who's in the primary home. So I, I think the best enforcement is gonna be the result of an attached unit by way of who's occupying the main home.
I agree, I agree with you, Nick.
I think our way around that is to say that only one unit can be rented at a time.
That you can do.
We can say one unit must be occupied by the owner of the home. Or, eh, you gotta get, be careful.
Or what is my question? Or what? What's gonna happen to them?
I know.
That's the next question. We're gonna do all this work, all this administrative effort for someone at town hall? To print the yellow slip that says fifty dollars, and then a pink one, and then a red one, and then a sixth one? That's, that's the next question, right? Or what?
Well, they can take, make them take it down. Make them get, you know, get rid of it. If, if they have a, a history of not doing what they're supposed to be doing in that unit.
Margaret, it came into play, helped me here, was it Stone Street several years ago? We had a, a bylaw that says no more than two unrelated people can live in a house. And there was a problem house, problem house, problem house. And that bylaw allowed, tho- that word in, in the bylaw allowed the neighbors to get peace and quiet again. And that was not a short-term rental. That was a long-term rental. Uh, that became a party house. It may not do us any good on a case-by-case, but you know, like day in and day out, but the one real troubled case that we have maybe in every ten years or twenty years, it may help like that did on, on that street.
Right. And it happened over here on Hosneck Road too, remember?
No, I don't.
Oh, yeah, they had, they had a party house here on Hosneck Road for the students. And the police came, oh, it was a big stink, yeah. And because they had allowed the students to rent that house for, you know, the summer and the neighbors finally had had it, and the police came and um, some, several liquor stores were in trouble and you ha- I think, I think it has to be attached, and I think we can't, and I agree, we cannot regulate who lives there. But we can say no more than three people, okay? And we can also say thirty days. That's, that's, you know, that's my feeling. I mean, I think there's lots of people today that would love to rent an attached unit for a thousand feet anywhere in Docklands and sell their unit, especially if they're older and they go to Florida for six months of the year.
And, and Margaret, I think Christine brought up a good point. The, we don't have to do the whole thing on this term. We could do, we could do the attached and, and leave the current detached uh requirements in place.
I think that's what we should do, because, you know, I don't wanna see people building, yeah, I don't wanna see people.
You agree, Kevin?
I agree, because I don't, I really don't wanna take away the rights of even one person that currently had, it falls under that prior to two thousand and six.
I agree.
I don't wanna take away even one person's right.
We shouldn't.
I, I agree with Kevin, but like, if, if somebody's under a present, present assumption based on current zoning, eh eh, I, I have some, some consternation with, with, with making, with changing that right. Okay, so let me ask you this question. With existing detached, w- we, we handle the attached right now, and the only change that's proposed in order to drive these numbers a little bit is in the existing detached, that we go from June sixth, then we expand that out to say two thousand fifteen. So if it was built in two thousand eleven with no intent of putting, you know, a, a, a unit over this barn, a garage that you built, now the bylaw has been expanded a little bit, so it brings in, you know, it's not a, it's an existing, currently existing, and hopefully permitted, because we're gonna find out whether it's permanent or not, as soon as they pull the permit for this, structure approved by the town up to a thousand square feet, all we did was change the date. And we were able to bring in some more existing detached structures. Setbacks are gonna be in place, uh, I would, you know, they would have to be, right? Because if it's of a size like that, you would have to, um, you'd have to abide by the setbacks anyway. And they would still have to deal with the lot size. They would still have to deal with uh the different zones. Just throwing that out there.
Two thousand, did you say two thousand feet?
No, to, say two thousand fifteen, sorry. You know, if, if we change the date on the existing detached, so I built my garage in two thousand twelve, well, I don't have the ability by right, given the bylaw right now, to put that apartment on top of that garage. But if we change that to say two thousand fifteen, I would.
So I think two thousand fifteen i- is a random point. And I believe the reason the two thousand six is in this current bylaw is because that was the date that they restricted and put limits and reeled in these accessory units. So in order to follow Sue, uh, I think we're gonna run into a problem with people that built in two thousand sixteen. Because you built in two thousand twelve, you change it to two thousand fifteen, now someone in two thousand sixteen. I think to follow the same, um, to follow the logic of the two thousand six date, we'd have to say whatever date this bylaw passes. Yeah, you know, spring or fall.
The only thing I would say to be careful of with that is that I, I agree, it can't be a random two thousand fifteen. It has to be set to something. But if you just, if you say for Springtown meeting of this year, you're gonna have everybody coming out of the woodwork trying to get it done just before, kind of like the same thing we were.
It will open the doors, you'll, you'll have a flow after that date. You're gonna have people dragging their feet.
I, I'll, I'll have a flow beforehand of people coming in with pool houses, so that they get something up.
Right, but after two, oh. I, I can't agree with that, because it won't change. They can still come in after.
It's not a deadline. We're just giving, we're just giving another.
But that gives them a, that gives them a. So they're gonna wanna have something on, they're gonna wanna have something on their property, right?
You're gonna, i- if you allow people to add to an existing building, then you're gonna have a lot of garages being built, or, or.
That I can agree with.
But we're trying to avoid, why don't we just stay completely away from any detached? In existing.
Because that, that's what I think you're gonna have a run on pool houses, right? You'd have a run on pool houses.
Well, the, the pool house will be a special permit, whether they do it today or after the bylaw is accepted. The garage is detached will not be, that, that, the, the, there'll be a run on building permits for garages. Because now they'll know, oh, let's just get a garage built. Then, after the town meet and it gets approved, then we can get that garage converted into a detached accessory. So that's where the run would happen. It would be with the permit for.
I say stay away from the adding the date. Just, just keep two thousand and six for now. We don't have to do everything, as Christine said.
Eh, unless we can find a trigger that brings us somewhere between two thousand and six and now, which I really can't think of.
I, I don't think so.
I mean, you just used the word detached, but we are leaning more towards attached, aren't we?
Yes, we're talking about the detached.
So, and basically what I was saying is that you can stay away from the building a detached accessory unit right now in the bylaw and stay with just existing buildings built prior to a certain date.
Right.
So, um, and, or stay with the attached, make the changes that we can, see what comes in. Uh, and then we could always, you know, address the, the detached at some point. Um, I, I have some concerns. I have concerns about the rentals, but I keep coming back to, what's the goal? The goal is uh, to drive additional housing in the town, uh, in, in revenue for the town and for the property owners. Um, so if that, if that's ultimately the goal, then th- then we would take the, the buffers off. We would, we would just, you know, approve detached units, new construction um, going forward, but there's, th- there is not a, an appetite for that.
Again, but I don't, I don't wanna see uh established neighborhoods changed. I just don't wanna see that, okay? You know, if you're driving along Smith Nick Road, uh, that's Smith Nick Road, uh, I don't wanna see fifteen detached apartments now going up because the bylaws changed.
And they would.
And even if you don't see it, and it's in the back, guys, it's changed the neighborhood. We have to, we have to, you know, we have to be careful what we allow.
And I guess, I, I, I'm, I'm with you. I don't, I don't wanna change the neighborhood either. But I'm trying, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, then, then what's the difference really between an attached or detached?
Because in attached, somebody's living, let's say you put an attached on your house, Kevin. And you, and you decide to rent it to someone. And that person is very noisy at night, has parties. How long you gonna put up with that? Because you're gonna hear that, because it's attached. If you own four acres and you put it in the back of your four acres, you really don't, not gonna hear that that much, and you're not gonna say too much, because you're not hearing it.
Are we gonna require a, like, like a, a driveway access to this, this unit?
Not if it's attached. We've got a driveway to the main house.
Is it gonna ha- is it gonna be allowed to have a separate entrance?
Yes.
It would have to, it would have to. And one of the, one of the additional, uh, one of the additional issues is uh, is parking. You know, the most, the most liberal parts of, of the country that are passing the most liberal, um, ADU bylaw is getting rid of any parking restrictions. So right now, I believe Christine, you, you're up to two. You have to have two additional parking spaces, I believe, or maybe one per bedroom. I can't remember what it is. Um, and I don't think we have it on this list.
I think it's two.
I think it is.
I think I read two.
And, and the state would get rid of the parking requirement. So, and then the most liberal bylaw also gets rid of property ownership issues. So if I own the house, I have, uh, I, I can put it in, in a ta- detached, attached, doesn't matter, as long as it meets the setbacks in the lot size, um, it's all by right. So the question is, how much by right eh do you wanna allow in the town, I guess? So we are not even close to the most liberal that I've seen, but um, but even increasing the size is, is a big, is a big thing. I think it will drive applications. There's no, there's no question. I have, I have one in our neighborhood, and uh, it was, uh, it was added to the garage. Um, I believe it may be a family member, but I don't know. Um, I don't know who the person is. But it is attached, and it's a good-sized unit. Um, the, the driveway was added on to, and um, don't hear boo from. And that was, uh, that was basically by this current bylaw, up to eight hundred square feet. So, anyway. Um, but yeah, parking is uh, another issue, Kevin. That we would have to, uh, we would have, have to either keep the uh, the, the requirement for parking, or eliminate it, or change it. Cause what, what if, what if people are parking on the streets now? Like, you're, 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 you're incenting people to, to park. The potential is for more people to be parking on the street. Yeah, the, the, the more, the most liberal bylaw changes are allowing the units with no parking restriction. Two bedrooms, most of them are two bedrooms, um, but no parking restriction.
Once again, though, if, if you, you know, if you allow, uh, more than, uh, I don't know how to say this, but you can drive around the town in Docklands and, and, and the single residents be normally. You, you've seen very few people parking in the street. I mean, it's just not, people have driveways. If you have two-acre lot, you have enough prop- if you have an acre lot, you have enough to add a larger parking area if you want. And if you add an accessory apartment for a thousand square feet, you certainly can add a little bit more to the parking in your, right.
You, you can, but are, are we gonna require it? Is, is my, my thought? So now, I, I, cause I don't wanna drive a lot of street parking.
Well, you know, I, I think, let's, let's say the storm we just had, it wasn't bad. But if we had people that had to park in the street, then it becomes, you know, listen to talk radio and listen to what New Bedford screaming about all the time when they have a snowstorm, alright? So I think we have, if you're gonna add a thousand square feet to a unit, then you have to have parking for that unit on that property site, on that land.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's only fair, yeah.
We're not gonna give you an opportunity, and then you're gonna turn around and throw two cars on the street in the town and not care. You won, we lost, that's not fair. We're looking to make a, a betterment and improvement for everybody. Opportunity for them, improvement for the town. So I think it needs to be included.
Alright, so, eh, so, so the consensus seems to be, um, as a concession for the additional space, um, the parking requirement stays.
Yes.
On-site parking, Kevin?
On-site.
Yeah, one, one per bedroom is what we're saying.
I, I believe it, I believe it is one per bedroom.
Two, okay, two off-street parking spaces are provided for, for the accessory apartment. In addition to other required parking spaces for primary single-family residents, all parking areas comply with applicable zoning standards.
Alright, so it's two.
It's, it says two, doesn't say anything about bedrooms. And right now, uh, we don't say anything about bedroom size.
Bedroom size we have, Kevin? No, we don't, I mean, it's, depends whatever they wanna build.
Well, I mean, i- if they're only doing one bedroom, do we really need two additional parking spaces? That's all. If they're only doing one, do we wanna tie this to one car, one car per bedroom, but then they'll just build. Put a wall between.
That's a loaded question. Thousand square feet, maybe you just say two parking spots.
Two parking spots, period.
Example room for four college students to sleep all weekend, and you still have three cars on the road. I have a question that's, that's not off-topic. The timing of it's wrong, but I'm just curious of the response. So, uh, by the grace of God, I put an ADU up that accommodates my son as he's going through college. He graduates college, gets married, moves on. I get older, I get tired. I no longer wanna see as many patients. Does that ADU, um, is there any problems converting that ADU into a home office? For me, for Margaret, Kevin, for a lawyer, for Chris, for anybody, can that ADU be used as a home office if the zoning allows? Yes, correct?
For your home office? Or you renting it out to somebody?
No, 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 no. If, if, if you have the right to do business in your home, can you use that ADU as a place of business? We're gonna run into that. What's that?
I said for your home occupation, then.
That's in the bylaw.
But that's not a thousand feet. It's, it's a lot smaller than a thousand feet.
Is, 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 if, if it's twenty-five years from now, I'm still around and standing, and I wanna see ten patients a day out of my home, and I have a right to do that, is doing it in the ADU gonna be contraindicated? Or can it become a home office? I guess how limited is that ADU and user scope moving forward?
Well, again, it goes back to parking, Nick. If, if, if you're gonna have, uh, twenty-five patients, yeah.
But if it's one at a time and it conforms, honestly, for me. But if it's one at a time and it conforms, honestly for me, there's gonna be other people that wanna do the same.
Anybody, okay, anybody, a lawyer, whatever. Okay. Um, right now, I, I thought that anybody can have a uh, I thought it was two hundred square feet. Am I right, Christine, for a home?
Home office, right?
I think it's two, it's very small.
Off the, the top of my head, I mean, it's
Yeah, I, I saw that too, Margaret. We could get that, oh, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's
It's gonna work backwards. It makes sense. I mean, it makes sense to be able to, to allow you to do that. If the, like, but I, whoever said if the zoning allows it, right? I mean, so if your district allows it, if your district doesn't allow it, then you know, it is what it is. If, you know, maybe you're taking the chance that the zoning is gonna change at some point. You know, and we're gonna get rid of home occupation or something. You don't know ten years from now. So you can't really make that guarantee to anybody.
Hundred percent, I got you.
But what you could do is
It's gonna decide, you know, your neighbors love you, they don't say anything, your neighbors hate you. And they see two cars a week, they're gonna file a complaint and it may cause a problem.
Right. I think if you're gonna change the ADU to uh something else, then maybe you've gotta come before, I don't know, the planning board, if you're gonna change it to something else. Okay, because now it's a different use.
I, I think it's in there already, Christine. I, I remember seeing uh the reference to um
Right.
Office occupancy for the owner. Um, we, we'll have to get that.
Uh, I don't, I don't need it. It was more of a curiosity about the limitation. The limitation or not, has somebody invested in ADU today? What they think or may not be able to do with it in the future may need to be somewhat transparent or at least accessible if they ask the question. That's all.
I, I remember it being almost uh, I, I remember thinking it was a little archaic, you know, because in the west end of New Bedford, we had physicians' offices.
Right.
In the homes all the time. They're all over the place. Um, so I remember um, there, there's something in the bylaw about the uh about office occupancy and I think it limits it to specific occupations too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it, it does, Chris.
We'll find
That's why, it's not a pressing issue. I just wanted to serve, that's all.
Oh, it's a good question, good question. Um.
Uh, I have a question before we move on. What do we decide about the SRC? You're gonna allow the SRC to have a thousand feet too? I mean, that's a six thousand square foot lot.
Um.
Did we make up?
Maybe you keep that one the way it is because that was a special so, and I mean, and that was, that was set up for special reasons, so.
Right.
Maybe you wouldn't necessarily touch that one.
I, I think that one has to stay.
What we discussed earlier today was the fact that the the lot coverage in the zone and bylaw would allow, would, would control that. Because those are all small lots.
They're very tiny lots.
They're very small. So, you know, if you have a very small house, you may be able to put a seven hundred square foot based on lot coverage.
It wouldn't be a thousand, it would be up to a thousand depending on
And that's what Chris said, it would, would be up to a thousand. So we would allow the other controls that are in place to determine the maximum size allowed. So the engineer would have to show, okay, here's an eight thousand square foot lot. The house is a thousand square feet, the garage is four hundred square feet, the blacktop is this. And add it up and work backwards from the lot size to determine what the largest size accessory unit could be. A lot of those homes only have single-family, uh, you know, two-car garage on a single level. So maybe they could put a larger unit by going up on the garage.
Hmm.
That, that's what we had discussed earlier.
Yeah, but even, even a two-car garage, a two-car garage, twenty-four by twenty-four, you're still short of the eight hundred, right? So you, it's really not gonna become a problem.
Alright.
Um, let's see. So the ownership, I think we're kind of on the same page there, property requirement. Um, minimum lot size, it, it sounds like we're, we're okay with keeping those figures. Um. I mean, it would still obviously have to pass building, uh, it would have to pass um, you know, the other departments. Um. The, yeah, I mean, the existing detached is just, it, it is what it is. It's two thousand six. If we wanna keep that for now and just try and deal with um, with the additional square footage, we could try that and see, see what we have for applications over the next couple of years.
I think, I think we, we exactly, we assess what happens once this makes headway and then we, you know, we take into consideration the next part of this subject, which might be that date forward.
Yeah. Um, let's see. Uh, let's see, the parking, we touched on the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let, let's just go right down the, the, instead of jumping around. I am seeing um lot size minimums. We, we haven't, that would be the next one after property owner.
Um, yeah.
Again, do we need the minimum lot size? If we're going for coverage as our ultimate lot coverage is our ultimate determination.
We needed it off, same.
We're trying to can limit everything by the maximum lot coverage. So right now, it's saying the minimum lot size is twelve thousand or six thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm. And, and your suggestion is get rid of the minimums, uh, as long as it fits with the size and the setback requirements?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't, if you have a ten, uh, eight thousand square foot lot, I don't think lot coverage, I think you're probably, probably already above lot coverage.
Right.
You're already above lot coverage um for that. But again, you have a cape with a second floor and you can put in the second means.
Hmm.
Can we allow for that on an eight thousand square foot lot? You're not changing the footprint. There's a lot of ways to, to add another floor of living without changing the footprint of the house and increasing the lot coverage. So right now, we could be ruling out somebody i- on an eight thousand square foot lot. They're not gonna increase lot coverage.
I, I agree with you, Kevin, wholeheartedly. I, I think it's, it's, it's not even redundant. I mean, I think it's exclusive in nature when it doesn't have to be. I think the lot coverage statement is in place for that reason. This is strictly exclusive. I don't see a benefit from this with other measures in place.
Or, or do we wanna cite lot coverage in this? Just say, you know, maybe replace this with, you know, um you know, uh, must follow lot percentage, lot coverage and actually bring that in to replace the minimum lot size.
Just thinking why.
I, I, I like this. I like what we're doing because I'm just throwing out an idea and
Yeah.
I'm not gonna get hurt if someone says, no, that's gonna stay there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of why, why it's twelve, why it's six. Um. I think that was an effort just to uh, to deal with, well, it, it's definitely uh um, dealing with coverage. Uh, I mean, the existing coverage was are, uh, we're, we're not talking about easing them in any
Not at all, not at all, Kevin, no.
Okay.
So, so maybe by reiterating the, that the setbacks have, have to have, be met and that the that the coverage cannot be exceeded, those type of things might be just enough. Like you're, like you're saying, I mean, those might be enough of a, I thi- I think it's good not to, I think it's good to put something in there. You don't necessarily have to put the numbers, but that way there it shows that you've given thought to it and you've considered it and then there's no ambiguity down the road. So if you, if you put in that there's coverage and that there's setbacks, that's a positive.
So lot, lot, uh, lot coverage requirements uh from the building department or
Yeah, however, however you
For the resident.
Yeah, by zoning.
Zoning.
Oh, yeah, zone. Oh, yeah, zone.
I think that way there, it shows that you've invested and you've given thought to it. So that your future boards don't make a different interpretation, cause that's part of what we're seeing now on a number of different things, right? We're trying to interpret what previous boards did and that's kinda hard.
Right.
I, I find this almost discriminatory in nature. It's like, why, why are we looking to point fingers at, at at these when we have other measures in place that are controls that we desire?
Yeah. Um, and then uh, the attached, I think we've, we've gone over that nauseam. Uh minimum size for the unit, we, we dealt, we dealt with that. Uh, the parking dealt with that. Family only, at least one unit. I mean, this is a problem with um, with enforcement, uh, that's the last part of it, but uh, special, uh, special permit, site plan review or as of right. I mean, if it, if it meets, if it meets the um, the bylaw and it meets the requirements of building, then it's as of right.
Yes, it's as of right.
Um. What it doesn't Crazy question. Yeah. Let's say you got a, 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 a medium-sized house on a big lot.
Yeah.
Uh, are we, are we talking about allowing the possibility with maintaining existing zoning compliance and, and, and building two attached accessory dwelling units?
Uh-uh.
No, only one per lot.
Only one.
Yeah, that's, that's in the, the bylaw now and that will continue.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the site plan review, the only thing that I can think of is when you do get into parking, you've gotta do the layout. And that, that, that's where more of the nuance comes into the development of the site, right? Um, and the um, the neighborhood.
Hmm.
The character. Maintaining a certain look. Um, I think I might be a little biased, but I think site plan review is an important aspect of
Well, I think you're right. I'm wrong. You're right. We have to take a look at it because, you know, we don't want somebody building something that's inappropriate.
I don't want somebody to throw up a bunch of cinder blocks.
Right.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you're doing it with special permit. Site plan review is kinda more for so
Special permit.
But so like today, the, the pool house was special permit from the ZBA. So maybe in this particular case, the, the permit granting authority would be the, the planning board. And so then, right, you could take into account the, the character, the architecture, the, you know, those type of things. So um, and then the special permit is because, similar to the thing, the, the pool house today was because they needed certain utilities in there. They needed a water line. They, you know, they wanted some of those other things. So I think you, you have a little bit more controls in this particular case doing special permit than you would site, site plan review, but it basically could be the same idea.
Alright, just food for thought, though. Uh, the, the most liberal states that have done this and tried to do as much as they can as of right, feel that either site plan review or the special permit is a layer of bureaucracy that holds back the permit numbers. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there. I personally think that um, the planning board needs to see it. Site plan review doesn't have enough teeth in it um, when it comes to um denying applications, if you will. Um. So the special permit would be um, would, would probably be best for, for the town.
For every single accessory unit that goes in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I have, I personally have a problem with that. I personally think, you know, right now, my neighbor next door, she did a great one for her mother. Um, she had to jog in the back corner because she didn't wanna have to go to ZBA because she was gonna be two feet too close. And I'm like, Joni, I, I, you know, I would have supported you. She didn't want that hurdle. I think if, if you wanna
See, that's my point.
That require, if you wanna put triggers that require site plan review, if it's a, a lot, you know, too small, but we should be looking for a way to make this by right as much as possible. I don't mind some triggers, but I don't want this board, I don't want the people of this town that wanna put an accessory unit in, every single one of them to have to come before this board or any board.
Alright, so w- without, without the restriction, uh, not a restriction, but um, because it is seen as a restriction with, without uh, allowing it to pass just as, as of right. Um, you're giving up. Um, well, you know what you're giving up. You know, you, you're giving up the, look at the, you know?
So I understand, um.
Yeah.
And, and it's not to say that the town is not gonna have some review. We're, we're gonna be relying on the building department to review the plan and say, yes, you, you have this by right. Or no, you need to go to this step or this step, special permit or zoning board of appeal. Those are your two options.
Yeah, so, so the building, the building department is gonna tell you, yeah, this is safe. You can do this.
Right.
That's right. Gonna say, wow, this is ugly.
Right. It's not gonna say you can't build a cement block building.
Hey, you know what? Uh, if, if I like a flat-roofed house, you know, um, with glass and mirrored sides and that's my right as a property owner to build that house. This is not a commercial use. I understand that we have architectural standards for commercial buildings. I don't believe we have architectural standards for homes. And I've seen some pretty ugly homes, but I bet you the people that built them loved them and thought they were beautiful.
But when you add on to a home, it's a little different, Kevin. When you, when you're building, when you're building a new home and you wanna build it on a cement block, you can build it on a cement block. But when you're in maybe a historical area and you wanna put something up, maybe you gotta try to blend it in.
If you wanna put something in for the historical district, that's a different story. I can support that. But where I live is not historical.
No, where I live is not historical, but
Exactly. Exactly.
I have a question. Um. Why would it, so I wholeheartedly understand where you're coming from, Kevin. And when I hear as a matter of right, I think of less hurdles in life because it's my right.
Absolutely.
And I know there's gonna be an engineer and there's gonna be a building department and it's gonna go before many eyes. If it's a matter of right, it's a matter of right. But why can't our language, since we're the ones trying to improve the opportunity for the residents of the town, why can't we include that, for lack of a better description, just off the tongue, materials in um, in finish must be consistent with what it's being attached to? I mean, you, you don't wanna go from a worn cedar shingle uh to yellow vinyl or you don't want to take your house with beautiful vinyl siding and put cinder block against it. You may not care because it's yours, but Julie across the street may not be thrilled. A little bit of control, using the word consistent with, I don't think is out of scope.
Well, you know, I mean, uh, it comes down to beauties in the eye of the beholder. I absolutely um, love red brick. But I know a lot of, a lot of people love to just paint over red brick.
I did it.
I, case in point, I like stucco. I'm Portuguese. I like stucco houses. People vinyl side over stucco houses.
I'm not telling you one or the other. I'm, I'm using the word consistent. Consistent with the structure that it's being attached to. How, how, how difficult or how
We can, absolutely. That, that's something that I could support.
Yeah, consistent, I, I like.
Consistent with the house that it's attached to. Or, or what if it is a, a red brick house and they wanna paint it the addition white brick? Is that consistent? Where, where are we gonna stop with, with the policing?
I think it's consistent if they put a brick and they wanna paint, paint part of it white. It's consistent, it's brick.
Accent walls are stacked stones, some accent walls are a gallon of bare paint.
But we don't, we don't, it's a slippery slope because we don't police any other residential properties or buildings or if somebody's just doing an addition onto their house and I've seen it and I'm like, oh my God, I can't believe they're doing that. That looks horrible. If you're building a garage, it's not gonna be occupied.
I'm, I'm thinking of half of our friends, Kevin, that are like, I can't believe you guys are supporting such and such developer or growth. And they, they use the words interchangeably and, and they, they, they use development and they use growth as if we're building a second mall going down Route Six, when all we're doing is talking something like this. But I think it allows for it to be better received across the board by all taxpayers as a matter of something that's available by right in the town. That's all. It's us employing a sense of insurance or security for those who are not going to participate, who might be adversely affected by something going south. It's our way of saying, no, Mrs. Jones, don't wait. The, the materials have to be consistent with the private residents. I'm, I'm comfortable with that because I feel like it is a significant amount of control without taking total control over the project. They're still gonna put something up. They're still gonna get their thousand square feet, so.
I, I think if you use, keep it simple and say consistent with the I, I think if you use, keep it simple and say, consistent with the current dwelling. I, I would feel comfortable with that.
And I think that'll be sufficient.
I don't think the states, you know, there's still, if this goes through town meeting, the attorney general still has to approve this. And if it's too con- restrictive. They would, they would kick it back. There's no doubt. Um, so I think if you say consistent. With the current house.
We're not excluding any materials.
We're not, no, we're not.
Yeah, we excluded one material.
So we want to make that a se- a separate bill, uh, bullet point or?
So it, it, that's just something as of the. Like additional language under the as of right option? Is that how you're proposing it?
I- as long as there's something as of right. I mean, that, that's where we, we got a little off track here with, with, with aesthetics. But. What I'm saying is that. There needs to be an as right, a way for people to. Walk into the building department. And say. Here's my plan. I meet all the, I meet all the requirements. I should not have to go to the Z, to the Z B A. Or to the planning board. That, that's all. We got way off track here with, with.
Oh, no, I don't think, I don't think we're too far.
Think we did, Kev.
Uh, I think you're right. I, I, I think it goes to, it goes to a very important point, and that's why it's on this list. The as of right is gonna drive applications. People will, they'll bark. If they have to go through a very bureaucratic process in order to get.
Absolutely.
In approvals to get these things done. However. A town board, like a planning board. Is giving up. An opportunity to review an application if we make it as of right. Uh, that's, that's the only point, you know, so we will give up the aesthetics. Um, in, in order to drive in, and just assume that if I, if I've got a six hundred thousand dollar house. And I want to put on a thousand square foot addition, uh, I'm gonna make it look pretty damn good. You know, um, so you have to assume a certain portion of that is gonna happen, right? Uh, but you're gonna get, you're gonna get a couple of outliers. Every time I drive down Allen Street in Bedford, I see an outlier and it drives me.
I mean, uh, ge- getting back to Margaret's original point. You know, it, thi- this, it, the word consistent, thank you, Nick, that, that's a great.
Yes.
Great idea. That word. Maintains. Or at least it's an effort to maintain the nature of the neighborhood. I, I, that, that.
The intent, the intent of the bylaw is to, is to keep consistency in the look and.
Yes.
And feel the current, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I. Hopefully it's better looking when it's done.
Yeah.
Not worse.
Because what happens a lot of the time is that you're gonna, you're gonna have this addition. Uh, and all of a sudden, all the siding goes.
Right.
And the whole house is, is um, is renovated.
Right.
That happens also.
Um, I don't think an engineer is gonna make an aberrant suggestion when the word consistent is part of the bylaw.
Right. Right. Yeah, and, and there was a certain amount of uh. Uh, pressure, but you know, I mean, uh, certain uh, review process that the building department goes through and, and. They know what they're doing. Um, but as long as everybody knows, you're giving up the right to uh, to take a look at the last plan before. Before. The two by fours go up, so. Um. Guest accommodations clearly spell out, uh. I thi- I think we've got ownership. Done and. The one guest accommodation real big issue is the. Term of rent, uh, term, uh, the, the period of rental, right? So I think we're, we're kind of together on. A minimum of thirty days. Um. Location, a lot setbacks, we've handled that. Um. Doesn't matter when the house is built, uh. Uh, enforcement is not our, is not our. Issue. That's the um. Building department. Uh, what else? Anything we didn't touch on?
Um, is there anything, do we have to? Talk about wh- what, what, what this does with some of the, the facilities? Let's say it's on sewer, let's say it's. Uh, electric, uh, I mean. Wh- what, what kind of requirement, I mean, it, we're, we're, I think we're wandering outside the. The realm of the planning board and getting more into building, but wh- what? Is it our space to, to say we need to require things? Does it need a separate circuit breaker? Does it need to be metered separately? Uh?
No, it's gonna pass through the building de- building department, uh, the, the, the. Se- uh, title, um, title five, the septic will, would have to be.
Border health.
Uh, we're, we're not gonna propose any changes to what is in, so like the third. The third. Bullet point or block from the end, uh, border health confirms that accessory apartment can accom- can be accommodated. With respect to onsite water, onsite septic. Disposal. In any other standards of the border health. So we're not gonna change that.
Right.
I think that's what you're getting to, Kevin.
Good, yeah.
So basically, you know, if your primary home. My last home was a very small, had three very small bedrooms. And if I want, I was on a, a limited. Septic system that recorded at the registry of deeds state and I would never use it for more than a three bedroom. Home. So if I knock down the walls and made two of the bedrooms. One big one and I put a single bedroom. In our apartment off the back of the house, that septic system would have been okay. If not, you trigger the whole. You know, whole new septic plan and updates and all that. Through the border health, not through us.
And it is a problem. If you're trying to, if you're trying to drive applications for these types of uses, um, those that are not on sewer. Um. It's gonna be an issue, um. You know, I don't think the water service and, and the sewer service is gonna be an issue. I think, uh, the septic system is gonna be. Uh, drawn in a little bit.
It's gonna add, add a level of complexity or expense.
Right.
Hey, maybe a septic is, is finished anyway and you need to do it.
Right.
And that's when you decide to add the apartment, so.
Yeah.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Margaret.
A- and Kevin, in talking about septic systems. Um, and I don't think this is gonna matter because I don't think we're gonna get a hundred applications. But, uh, if you're on sewer, is this gonna be a problem for the people who? Uh, adding on now because we have a problem with sewer? In the town?
You know what, Margaret? I, I'm not, uh, from what I, I've heard and seen. Uh, that jury is still out.
Okay.
So, um. I think in, in my, in my personal opinion. I, I think that the, the town has departments that, um. That are gonna be ahead of the development in, uh. Uh, in the town and it's their responsibility to make sure that the services are available and they're doing the best that they can. Um.
Just a question.
Yeah, changes like this are, um. You know, they, they're gonna be brought throughout the state, so I, I think, you know, in the case of the D P W, um. They, they'll, we'll be making them aware of it, obviously. Uh, they were concerned about our. Uh, fifty-five and older bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
You know, rightly so, but at the end of the day. You know, if, if people have property rights and, and they can build, uh, they, they have to. You know, obviously start the work that they need to do in order to make the systems available. Um, to the lots that are available in the town, so. Um. I think we've got some room there, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Christine, what else on this?
I think this definitely gives us, um, some clear guidance of what you're looking for, um.
Oh, it's clear to you, is it?
No.
It's clearer than it, it clearer than it was.
Definitely clearer than it was.
Guys all have your opinions and I think it's, I think it's good, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so let us put something together and then, um. I have something, a, a draft that I'll work from and then we'll kind of. Take it through and then that will be something that'll be passed out to all of you to look at again.
Right.
Um, I, I do have. A concern based on, I keep hopping back on this one today just because it was current, um. The. I, I'm gonna send you the little piece of, it's section eight of the thing with the special permit requirement. And I know people don't want more regulatory and they don't want necessarily more permitting and more. It, it doesn't really give the Z B A room necessarily for denial, but it allows for certain things. So maybe the trigger is. You know, the extension of a water line, or maybe it's something like that. I just think. Relying on the, on the building department, building department is fabulous, you know, I mean, but. I, I, I think maybe some other checks and balances. I mean, you aren't necessarily a board that you have to wait. Six months to get on, or you have to, y- you know, but I, I think some other eyes on it and a chance for other. Other people to see it, or else it's gonna be part of that. Even the as of right thing that you ensure that you're a part of the building permit re- review, so at least you have eyes on it as a. You know, as your department or as your whatever, so you, there, there can be a little bit of oversight. I mean, you know, you don't know what the next building commissioner is gonna do. Or you don't know. You know, how things might change going forward. You don't want to totally take yourselves out of that or take the planning. Department out of it, or D P W, or anybody else. They could say, you know, the next board could say, the next commissioner could say, um. You know, we're reviewing them in-house and that's it. Nobody else is looking at things. So I, I think you just gotta have. A little bit of, of something in there to protection. I don't care what it is, but if, even if you're gonna do it as of right. You know, maybe there needs to be a paragraph similar to like insight plan review where it says we, we bring it to the D P W, the border health, the whoever. Conservation, something in there just for an added protection. I'm not.
I, 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 you know, it's, it's a valid point and, and Kevin did a, a good job of bringing this, this issue to the forefront, so. Um, it, it'll be a concern as we, as we kind of drill down on this and give us some options for, um, for the amendment, but. Um, you know, we'll look at it and we'll, and we'll talk to legal about, uh, some, some scenarios that maybe have come up in the past where. We either, they had, they had the, uh, oversight or they didn't have the oversight and what issues came up and. You know, maybe we can get some examples of whether we really need to do it or it's, or it's a non-issue.
Right, well, like I said, it could be still as of right and it could just, there could be just a paragraph or a sentence in there that says that it has to be brought to all of these things as part of the building. Permit application or whatever, you know, I mean.
You might get a building commissioner who loves lime, green, vinyl. It could be prob- problems.
Right. You can't account for everybody's taste, okay?
With the primary dwelling, then that's the color they're gonna go with.
Yeah, right. Well, but you know, I mean, you might think that orange and blue are good, they're complementary colors, right? You know, I mean. I might, I might think, you know, candy cane.
Pinky green stucco, that's what I want.
Okay, so, uh.
I think it's great, I think it's great and we've got something, so we'll definitely. Get something together for you over the next week or so.
Okay, uh, anything else on this one? Nope. All right, uh, number, number three, discussion on zoning articles for spring town meeting, article thirty, minimum lot size.
So, uh, so in addition to the other ones that we're working on for you, what came up last week is there's a problem with, uh, another site. In, in town where the, um, this article thirty does not match the, um. The, the zoning articles, so the numbers are a little bit different in this, this, basically the minimum law area, um. Bylaw is kind of like a summary of some of the other bylaws. Um, so what we are proposing to do is to make it consistent with the other by, with the other bylaws, the numbers. And then in doing that, we realized that every. Zoning district was not accounted for. Um, it became a problem. Uh, there was a denial letter issued. It pointed out, it's, this case is gonna go before the Z B A. The, the applicant at the end of the day is still be- below either the, this bylaw number or the other bylaw. So I'm proposing, this is gonna be another one. It's, we're not changing anything, we're just making it. We're not changing anything in the overall intent of any zoning. We're just making it consistent with the individual chapters and we're. And making sure that this chapter includes, or this article includes every single bylaw in it. Because the next building commissioner might also just look to this. Um, and this section rather than the individual section, so we want the summaries to be right. So that's all this.
This goes, this goes toward, uh, the overall goal of just trying to clean everything up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get everything consistent and clean it all up. So that's all this one is. Um. It's pretty straightforward. You can ask me any questions after you read it or whatever. We've got a couple of months, but. I just wanted you to know that this is gonna be on the town warrant, uh, with, along with this other one and anything else that we accomplish.
Clean up, no material changes.
No material.
Or deletions.
Yep, that is correct. Yeah.
Yep, uh, minutes, number four, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. I think, um. Was there anybody missing? I think Kevin, were you missing from that one?
No, is there?
No, we, yeah, we had, we had everybody present.
Kevin, everybody, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll take a motion on that one.
Make a motion to file, accept, accepted file.
Motion made by Nick Secupatus.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Kevin Mello, uh, Nick.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet? We lose Margaret?
Sorry, yes.
That's okay, um, and Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Chris Soniales, yes. Uh, next one is. Maybe at two screens. Uh, next one, correspondence, town of Westwood.
Um, so this first one is, um, a little bit interesting just because it was, uh, a stop work order, so they were. It's just interesting to see how their wording is for it. Um, nothing unusual here. Um, I did send you all. Um, something last week that was included in here again, and that is for the Broadway broadband meetings for tomorrow. Um, there are three different sessions going on tomorrow, um. So that, that information is available through D C T V. They are running it as well. Um, and then the other thing that I sent you because of the timing with the holidays and our, um. And our meeting was the thing from historical that you had gotten regarding to, uh. Two properties that they were looking at, um. We did not give them any additional guidance with regard to that. I didn't receive any comments back. Um. So that's it for that.
Yep.
So that's just acknowledge and file.
Uh, is there a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made, but seconded by Margaret Sweet, Kevin Mello.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Secupatus?
Yes.
Chris Soniales, yes. Uh, number six, for your review information, new business, go ahead, Christine.
Um, so this next one here, um, we usually have this on here standard. I've changed the format up a little bit for the start of the new year here. Based on, um, information that we had. So we had a couple of decisions that had come from the Z B A. Um, the first one was for six ten State Road, um, it was a general business item. The next one was a six month extension. For, um. One Anderson Way. Um, we had one, seven eighteen Dartmouth Street. And, um, uh. Fifty-nine Victoria Street. So those were all decisions and then the last one was for six ten State Road as well. Um. So they were all from November and December.
Right. We don't need a motion on those, do we?
Nope, nope, that's all set, um. The next thing would be the, um. Uh, the, the subcommittee reports.
Yep.
I don't think there were any subcommittees over the last couple of weeks.
Um, there was a soil board meeting, but the only. Thing of significance that we did were, uh, renew. The permits. In town.
The soil, soils board?
Yes. Yes, we did have a meeting and that, that's all that we really did.
Margaret, did you have one?
I have one tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, okay. I know I've got Serpide coming up, Christine, when is that? Uh, well, you're not doing it, right? Uh, fourteenth, I think it's coming up.
Yeah, I don't have that. I do have a separate meeting with Serpide, um, for a bike way. Um, thing in the next couple of weeks, so it is just a Zoom. It's the, but the bike way that is going. From New Bedford to Fall River or something like that, so I will give you a review of that after.
Right down the middle of one ninety-five?
Um, north of one ninety-five somewhere? Yeah.
Uh, let me see.
So then next is the, is the planner's report, so this is what I switched up. So ended the year projects, we kind of cleaned out a few things. We still have a couple of. Outstanding ones that'll be coming back forward. Um, I've also given, um. Chris, the annual report, that is something, um, we, we always do, but we haven't, typically we just summarize. Whatever we've had for permits and whatever, but because we've had so many changes. Of, um, in the, the department, you know, with the addition of Ross and opportunities that we've gotten involved in, I kind of gave it to him to kind of look over and give me comments on.[1796.44] It's due at the end of the month. Um, we had also discussed at one of the last meetings about technical reviewer meetings. Um, so I'm kind of reviewing the bylaw a little bit on that, the site plan review bylaw, um. And we do have a technical reviewer meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so Ross and I had a little miscommunication on that. He thought I wanted to give you. Previous things that came before, but I'm trying to give you something coming forward. So tomorrow we have conceptual plans. There are two of them, um. One is on State Road and the other one is on Tucker Road. It doesn't necessarily mean that these projects will come to fruition, but it's an opportunity for people to bring their, their general concepts. Um, forward. In this particular case, that's what's happening in both cases. Um, I don't, I don't know that one of them will actually go anywhere based on. It, it just seems to be a stretch. Um, I do think that the other one will go, you know, we'll get some real feedback tomorrow. But I'll try to just let you know when those meetings are and, and get you the things, so you can just ask questions in the future. I know it didn't work out really well for this one. Unless you look at these two things that Ross sent you later this afternoon and give me comments before tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. But going forward, we can kind of do that. Um, we do have a couple of. Of bigger site plan review things that are coming, kind of seem to be coming forward right now. Um, this is the time of year when we kind of see a lot of those things because everybody's getting ready for the next construction season that happens. Um. Other than that, I guess that's it, um. Uh, we did have a department head meeting today, um, so I know that um. Uh, the town clerk's office did say about the town census that happened. Um, they did send that out last week and then um, nomination papers for who's ever up for nomination this year are due by April second, so that is now open if anybody needs to get their papers or anything like that.
What about campaign finance? Um, wh- what's the? The closing date on those? Anybody know? It's the end of the month? Or is it passed already?
Well, I, I'm not sure this is the right date, but for, with something that I'm on the board, it's um, January twenty-second, I think.
Okay, alright.
But I, I'm not sure it's the same.
I, I haven't looked at email in a while, so I've got to get back to that, I think.
Okay.
Want to do pretty soon. Okay, uh, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
So then I have to put you on so that you could always speak at the end now.
Yes, and let me pontificate. No, I've got.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, there we go, there we go. Thank you, guys.
Motion made to adjourn.
No kidding, kidding, kidding.
Oh, I, I'm done, I, I have no comment.
My second was going to be very honest, Kevin. It wasn't going to be a joke.
Okay, good night.
No, I, I'm glad we got through the ADUs. Thank you for.
Yeah, I think that, that's a huge thing. I, I think it, it was a wonderful discussion actually and everybody participated. It's fabulous. You should all be very happy with. The way it went tonight. I think it's good, good dialogue.
Yeah. Alright, guys, um, motion adjourn is on the table.
I'll second it.
Second by Nick Secupatus, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Secupatus?
Yes.
Good sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Chris Sonia is yes. Thank you, guys.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Everyone, happy new year, bye.
Bye.
Christine. Good night.